Good afternoon, good morning, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Whatever time you're watching this video, welcome. It's a pleasure to welcome you to our fourth quarter, fourth operating quarter Town Hall meeting. Most of you know we do these meetings, what we call Town Hall, four times a year. And these meetings tend to be a little bit different than open forum in that they're a bit more comprehensive. And we almost always have our most senior executives make presentations on the operation and the daily interactions we're having here at Morings Park. We have first and foremost our normal presentation we start off with, and that is, is that our next meeting will be the open forum on January 22nd, and that will be at 11:00 a.m. And then pass on to your neighbors, please, that if anyone misses this, they simply need to go to the neighborhood website, and they can go into the video section. There's a drop-down box there, and they can go right into slides for management executive corner. Now, today is going to be a relatively comprehensive meeting. We've got a number of presenters. We're going to start off with Diana Bailey, our Vice President of Clinical Services. And Diana is going to talk a little bit about the COVID-19 vaccination process, as you all have been watching on television. We're going to be addressing that here very soon down in southwest Florida, and particularly on our long-term care and nursing center operations. She's going to also introduce Dr. David Lentz. And then Tom Mann will come up next, and Tom is our Vice President of Sales and Marketing. He's going to give us a snapshot of our current success in occupancy and our sales success at the original campus, Morings Park at Gray Oaks, and also our new campus over at Grand Lake. Tom will be followed by Valerie Clan, our Vice President of Human Resources. And Valerie's got a number of components she's going to address with you. We don't often have Valerie give us a presentation. It's always interesting when she does. She talks about the workforce. She talks about effort allocation and our recruiting efforts. So we're looking forward to that. We'll have Celeste Lynch, who is our Associate Executive Director, come on up, and she's going to talk about holiday events, which is upon us right now. Randy Powell will follow Celeste, and Randy's, of course, our Executive Director of Facilities Management. And Randy has a number of updates, and I even think some photos for you. Richard Zazaro, Vice President of Dining Operations. Richard is going to share with you quite a bit of information about the holiday dining events, and we're looking forward to that. And then Tony Marks, our Chief Information Officer. Tony's going to present to you some of the latest and greatest information on hot wire, and also some additional support information on information technology. I have a few remaining remarks after everyone has spoken. A little bit about perseverance in 2020, but I'll leave that for the very end. So without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and pass the microphone over to Diana Bailey. Diana?
Well, hello, everybody. I just want to start off my area with just wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. We're looking forward to a wonderful 2021. So today I'm going to start off with introducing you to our new team member in the physician clinic. Dr. David Lentz has joined us full-time. We're very excited to have him as a team member here on campus, and I'm going to let him give you a little bit of a background about himself.
Thank you very much. I've been very happy to meet a lot of you, and I look forward to meeting many more. I started in October, and I'm now full-time here. So a little bit of background about me and how I got to southwest Florida. I grew up outside of Hartford, Connecticut. I spent eight years in Boston doing undergraduate in my medical school at Tufts University. I did my internal medicine residency training at the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, and moved to Florida to be closer to family. I've been practicing with NCH Physician Group for the last six and a half years on Marco Island, and I've wrapped up my practice there, and now I'm full-time in the Centers for Healthy Living. I'm at both the original campus and Gray Oaks, and I'm really looking forward to being part of the healthcare team here. We've got a great team, and what I'm really excited about is really, you know, the comprehensive care, both in our clinic, but as in your entire community. And there's such amazing resources here available to keep you healthy and take care of you when you're not. So I'm really looking forward to working here and taking care of all of you, getting to know you better, and just really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Okay, and a little bit of an update with regard to the nasty COVID-19 bug. As of 2000, or the 15th of this month, local positivity rate was at 7%. Oh, excuse me, I apologize. Okay, there we go. So local positivity rate was at 7%, and state positivity was at 8.33. This is ebbing and flowing. Today, we're over 11%. So I just want to keep in mind, and I want you to clearly understand, this is not over as of right now. We need you to keep with your due diligence, with keeping masks up when you're around other people, keeping six feet apart if possible. But until the majority of us are vaccinated, you're still in danger of catching this bug. So please, please, keep it on, keep ongoing with regard to protecting yourself. Now, an update with regard to the vaccines. I'm sure many of you heard online that the governor is heavily focused with regard to first vaccinating, the most inclined to catch COVID-19. So we're starting off with the skilled nursing facilities and assisted living communities within the state of Florida. As of today, they are focusing in on the hotspots, which include Miami, Tampa, and Jacksonville. The governor has a goal to vaccinate the rest of us by the end of this month, and this is a very big goal. On a daily basis, they're receiving shipments of the Pfizer vaccine, and the government, with regard to the National Guard, are now actually vaccinating today in order to incorporate plans for future buildings. So once we are notified, a communication will go out to let you know that they will be on campus. They'll be vaccinating all of the residents within the care areas, as well as the staff. Now, with regard to independent living, I just want to start off with explaining, Dan Laviner has been just diligent since July in advertising or communicating with the governor's office with regard to independent living residents, and the importance of vaccinating our community as a whole to keep us safe. We do believe that due to his working with Leading Age and promoting this fact, that the governor does have a clear understanding of how important it is to have you in the next phase of vaccinations. We don't have anything in writing at this point, but we do understand that he has made some good headway, and we should be communicated soon with regard to who will be included in the next round. So when we do hear that, we will very quickly let you know. And once we have an understanding of how that will be provided, we'll also have a plan in effect to provide the vaccinations to you. And also, that is what I have for today. So we'll be, we'll have more communication. Just understand that things are changing day by day, and once we have a clear understanding of how we're going to be proceeding, we'll let you know. Thank you. And now we have Tom Mann with marketing.
Well, happy holidays, everyone. Hard to believe I've been here almost one year now as part of this very special team and these communities. I feel truly, truly blessed. I'm going to start off the marketing updates first with the original campus, and as you would expect, we have started to pick up, pick up some speed since August. We've had 17 sales. One of the things I want to make you all aware of is we are almost sold out of the one-bedroom. So if you have friends who are interested in the one-bedrooms or being a ghost, it's important that they understand that that opportunity is quickly slipping away, and they should come visit us soon. We also have currently 87% occupancy, so 344 of the 394 residences are occupied. In Orchid Terrace, we have 58 of the 69 assisted living and memory care units occupied, which is an 84% occupancy, and occupancy is, again, picking up there now that we're able to take admissions again. At Gray Oaks, we are currently at 95% occupancy. 101 of 106 of the units are occupied. I will tell you, most of the residences are already spoken for, and so we are really pretty much down to one available residence there. And so again, if you have friends that are interested in that opportunity, tell them to act quickly. The assisted living and memory care at Gray Oaks is 86% occupied. And then lots of exciting things happening at Morings Park, Grand Lake, our newest community. We are really picking up speed there. The team had 10 sales in November, and we have already had four sales this month. Phase one is completely sold out, and phase two, we have 31 of 61 units sold with six holds. And excited that the clubhouse is expected, I believe, for us to open in August still. So I expect that once the clubhouse opens, the sales will really pick up there, because I don't know if you have seen the plans, but it is absolutely gorgeous. The sales team is hosting, to show off the clubhouse, the sales team is hosting a hard hat tour, actually, on the 29th of this month. The, really, pretty much all of the units on the outside of the clubhouse are sold, and so what we have remaining are the beautiful Cove residences. So again, half of the residences in the clubhouse are sold. So again, I'd like to thank you all for a really wonderful year and a happy new year to all of you. And next, I will be welcoming up Valerie Clan, our VP of HR.
Hello. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I'm excited to be here. We have a lot of things to share that we've been handling over the last year. I've been here, I guess, almost a year and five months now, so it's good to feel like I feel comfortable. I've met a lot of you folks. I've received a lot of your phone calls and your recommendations and your thoughts throughout the year, and I really do appreciate it. So anytime that you have any HR ideas, please feel free to give me a call. So without further ado, we're going to start with going over just a real quick review of what we have been up to over the last year and a half, the HR team. And you'll see that we'll be talking about recruitment, retention, all of the organizational effectiveness, and also our engagement survey for our partners. The most recruitment that we've been focused on is really launching the applicant tracking system in order to better facilitate onboarding of new hires, ensuring that we're building our brand out in the community, and also really focusing on social media so that we could lower our start-to-hire dates, and also our recruitment efforts to increase a pipeline of candidates so that we are ready to fill positions as they become available. We also really worked on building a talent network. And when I talk about a pipeline of candidates, it's so that we can always reference and have a pool of people wanting to work for Morings Park so that we don't have to continue to recruit new positions. We have some folks already ready to start right away. We also have been working on updating our Morings Park career site. I encourage you to check it out. You can just go to Morings Park Careers and look at the Internet, and it will show you what we're recruiting for, and a little bit about the colors, the coding, all of that is updated. Turnover. We've been focusing on our turnover rates, ensuring that our partners are engaged, and what we really have been ensuring is that our turnover stay around 16 to 17%. That's well below the average. It does creep up sometimes, sometimes it needs to. Not all turnover is bad, but we do manage it. We manage it with the department heads. We talk through some of the scenarios of why there's turnover, and for the most part, I will tell you, Morings Park is very, very low. The average turnover for a skilled nursing facility can run almost 40%. We're well below that. We also are working on compensation study. We completed it earlier this year, and we took into account hospitality surveys, all different levels of care for residents and customer service. So we took those numbers, we looked at the compensation, we ensured that our compensation was competitive. We also enhanced the Morings Park Learning Institute, and we developed it through, you might have met Jonathan Hart. He's our Director of Learning and Development, and he has been focused on our Relias Training, which is our learning management system, also enhancing our Management Essential Training courses, and really building the management team, as well as our partners, giving them opportunity to move within the organization and preparing them for quality customer service and compassionate care. That's also been updated as well. Of course, we've been supporting Diana and her magical efforts in the COVID, and, you know, we've been helping with partner testing, partner education, partner information about the vaccines is what we're focused on now, and just really assisting everybody through the pandemic. We developed the HR Pandemic Manual, which had a lot of information for our managers to reference, that we were consistent. We also have provided additional wellness initiatives to reduce healthcare costs. We launched a new wellness initiative that focuses on the seven dimensions of wellness, which is consistent with what the residents also receive. And we have built our wellness points so that partners can accrue them quickly and also get the discount on their insurance, and really encourage them through education and many different programs that they can carve out that works for them. We've also had high potential talent review and succession planning programs that we've implemented. We're currently building with the team, the executive team, and also the executive directors, succession planning throughout the organization to ensure that we're ready for the next step, and also training them on, you know, partners, what we're looking at, how we're choosing our high potential employees. We're also working through an updated Partner Handbook. It's almost completed. We look for a distribution, the first, probably the first week of January, if it's completed and ready to go. New cover, new design. I wanted to show you a sample. I mentioned earlier about the wellness initiatives. This is our roadmap to wellness. It was released at the same time that we conducted biometric screening for our partners, and it was pretty in-depth screening that they were able to go to if they had our insurance. And we obtained the information, we provide them back with opportunities to enhance their health through, based on their scores, that they can carve out based on our Morings Park benefits. So they're truly building the best partner experience for themselves through our benefits. Also, you know, it's a little hard to see, but it does list there that they need 25 points a year. Engagement. We developed the Partner Experience Initiative. It's very similar to the Partners in caring you may remember that was here. So we enhanced that program, rebranded it under the Partner Experience, and we feel that it updates it a little bit more with how partners can build their own partner experience. If you take a 25-year-old partner that starts with two children, her desires are going to be much different than mine are at 50, 50-something. So I'm definitely going to be looking at different benefits in that. But we wanted her to be able to move through the Morings Park benefits and build the best for her at that time. As her children age, maybe she wants to then go back into the Morings Park Learning Institute, build more education, move into a new position, or does she looking for benefits that she can cover her family with, have flexible PTO hours? And we can really adapt it to what works for them through each career step while she's here at Morings Park. And we're really looking to go beyond Morings Park. How are their children doing? What do they need? How can we support them? So that's part of the partner experience. We also created a Culture Champion Committee, because we understand that you can't move a culture forward if you don't have everybody rowing the same way on the boat. But we wanted to hear from everybody, though, at every level within the organization. So we do reach, we have meetings every two weeks. We talk about the current issues, we talk about what they're hearing in the field, how we can better our benefits, what we can do to support the partners. We also have a pulse survey that we issued back in July. Those results were over the top. I mean, it was 96% satisfaction, they were engaged, of course, their top benefits that they liked, we heard from them, we've enhanced what they wanted, and we're looking forward to 2021 for sure, to continue to expand and support the partners. Okay. So 2021 beyond. We're going to continue with the pandemic. We'll continue to support our amazing managers. We'll continue to support our partners and try to answer and meet their needs. We are absolutely looking to ensure that we are ready for any competitive marketplace, that we are, our compensation stays competitive. We continually do surveys throughout the year to ensure that we are competitive. We also look to increase our living wage for our partners in January. We'll continue to build our wellness initiatives and provide opportunities for our partners to become educated, more maybe about any health issues that they have, by through podcasts and really interactive wellness initiatives. The Morings Park Learning Institute will continue to offer the classes that we currently have, which include management training, English as a second language, customer service, compassionate care, and also the financial learning program that I know the foundation has been extremely supportive in, Mr. Sheffield. So we'll continue to offer those brilliant, you know, programs that Morings Park offers and just really thinks outside the box to keep our partners updated and engaged. So we absolutely appreciate your feedback. And I think also in 2021, we really want to focus on our metrics. We're going to continue to build our infrastructure so that we're providing the managers with metrics, real-time dashboards, and also our executive team to really focus on ensuring that we're tracking and measuring our success accurately, and we're able to identify areas that we need to improve very quickly. So that's what we're focused on for 2021. And again, I'm always available. If you have any feedback, please don't hesitate to give me a jingle. All right, happy holidays. Here's Randy.
Again, I'm Randy Powell, Director of Facilities. I want to start off by just thanking all the residents for your generosity with the annual gift program. It's overwhelming, your generosity, and from, on behalf of all the facilities department, thank you. Two big projects will be kicking off starting the new year. The first one's the Corst Green Room. That's about a 1,300-square-foot addition to the back of Bauer Chapel or on the east end of Bauer Chapel. This will be used really as a green room or preparation area for concerts, and many of the activities go on. It'll also bring in additional storage. If you bend towards the back of the chapel at any time, there's a lot of stuff stored in a very small space, so we'll be able to store all that in a more efficient manner. And so this is a very welcomed project. Timeline, we're looking to get a permit late January and then start construction shortly thereafter. And we've already started a lot of the logistical planning and access and conversations with that contractor. We're looking at about a five- to six-month construction window, wrapping up the project in midsummer. A lot of activity at Bauer. The next project is at the Columbarium. So again, this project will kick off roughly in the same timeframe, early February. We just recently received a permit after a lengthy process with the city, but that's finally gone through, and we're able to start construction. What this project does is what used to be referred to as a phase two of the Columbarium, and it adds two wings to the Columbarium. As you walk into the Columbarium space where you have the water fountain in the center, it adds a wing to the left and right of that. Total addition of about 36 niches per each wing, so a total of 72 spaces are added to that structure. And with that, I will be followed by Celeste.
I wanted to go over a few of the exciting holiday events that we have had so far this year and that we are planning in the coming few weeks. We've had our residents with the Campus Life Department attend a wonderful Holiday Light Trolley Tour. We had 22 residents attend that event. I know all of them enjoyed that immensely. Also, we have gift wrapping and ordering assistance happening in the former Maxwellness Space here at the Center for Healthy Living. Our wellness team is there to help you if you need that. That is on Mondays between the hours of 3:00 and 4:00 p.m. So stop on down, and they will give you all the assistance you need. We also had residents attend the Nightlights at the Botanical Gardens. We had 13 residents attend that, and I know that's always a special and beautiful event that residents enjoy. And we had the Thanksgiving Hangover Bocce Event. 12 people attended that, and I think maybe the rest had a hangover. I'm not sure why it was only 12, but the 12 that were out there had a great time, and we're getting, with this nice weather, getting out there on the bocce courts. So I hope you'll join the wellness team in getting out and playing some bocce. Some of the upcoming events that we're looking forward to, our Christmas concert at the Bauer Chapel is sold out. You know, John Fenstemaker always does a fabulous job of planning some wonderful performers, and that concert is sold out right now. We are planning some more concerts in early January, so watch for highlights about that in the resident weekly newsletter. The Variety Show and Christmas Tree Lighting are both now available on the Morings Park Home Channel. So if you use your Hotwire Remote Control, up in the top center, there's a little picture of a home. You click on that, that will take you to the Morings Park Home Channel. Look for Morings Park Original Campus, and then you'll see a variety of options for videos, and you can check out the Variety Show and also the Christmas Tree Lighting. We'll also be showing here in the Sheffield Theater, the movie It's a White Christmas at 2:00 on the 23rd. We will have a Christmas Treat Day here at the Center for Healthy Living from Wellness again on 12/21. That is also in the former Maxwellness Space, so come down and get some treats. And I know many of you have been participating in the door decorating contest. Watch for the winners of that contest, which will be published soon in the weekly newsletter. Also, I'd like to give you an update on the Chaplaincy Program. We've recently had Bible Studies. These are groups that meet every Wednesday in the Bauer Chapel, and they will continue through the end of December. And on December 9th, we had a service of remembrance for all those who have gone before us, and that was very well attended. Coming up, this Sunday is the Fourth Sunday of Advent. The service will be in the Bauer Chapel at 11:00. The service will be in the Bauer Chapel at 11:00. And then we're getting ready for all of our Christmas Eve services, not only at the Bauer Chapel on Christmas Eve at 11:00 a.m., but also at the Chateau at 9:00 a.m. and at Orchid Terrace at 10:00 a.m. One of the things that I know I've been hearing from some of the residents is when is our caregiver support group coming back? Well, I'm happy to tell you that that will be back in early 2021. Emilio has recently hired a new pastoral chaplain, Jessie Duquet, and she will be here to assist him now, so he's looking forward to getting the caregiver group started again. And I just wanted to end on behalf of all of resident services to thank all of you for your very generous gift. It meant so much to our partners in our departments at Orchid Terrace, and we just, we just think the world of all of you for doing that for us, and want you to know that it makes a big difference in all of our lives. Also, I wish all of you a very Merry Christmas. I know our residents of Jewish faith just had Hanukkah. I hope it was happy, and I wish you all a healthy New Year.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you very much for joining us today. And I'm going to go to that. And you know who I am. My name is Richard Zazaro, Vice President of Dining Services here at Morings Park, and I'm very happy to be with you today. I also want to thank the residents for such generosity and to thinking of the dining team members in their Christmas gift this year was really just amazing, and the generosity is just almost overwhelming, and I really, we really appreciate that. Thank you. I wanted to really just focus today on the upcoming two holidays because I know there's a lot of information out there, and some of it could be a little bit confusing, and I just wanted to review it one more time with you. So we're going to talk about holiday hours of operation. We're going to talk about park rail update, and we're going to talk about some current capacities. I also wanted to put up this chart of our hours because I know that I might not have communicated this effectively, but just so you can see that the CHL is what days it won't be open and what days the park rail will not be open. Again, there was some resident feedback about exactly what restaurants were open, so this is a handy guide for you to refer to, to see exactly what restaurants are open and what time they're open. I also wanted to talk about our special events. And again, last time we did Thanksgiving, there were some questions about how to make a reservation, and what we did is we created a special event on RESI, and some of the language was a little bit different, and it spoke to buying a ticket. So you all did a great job for Thanksgiving because we had a very successful day, but I just wanted to reiterate that if you click on that reservation for Christmas Eve or Christmas Day or New Year's Day, you'll hit that banner, and one ticket would be one cover. So you would just put in the amount of people that would be in your party. And so far, so good because I have 130 reservations on Christmas Day and almost 100 on Christmas Eve. So I think pretty much you've got that covered. Also, the booking window is going to close on the 23rd, and essentially that is just to make sure that we don't have any overflow, that we don't go over our capacity. And also for New Year's Day, the reservation booking window opens on the 17th, and that's basically the natural cycle of RESI so that you'll be able to book for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. The other thing that I wanted to discuss with you was in-home dining. In-home dining, I think that we've had this conversation before in our open forums, is a separate business within itself here at Morings Park and for the dining team, continues to be very robust, continues to essentially carry, carry the load of the dining operation. And so for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, we wanted to make sure that we were communicating that it's a special menu. So again, on Thanksgiving, you all did a great job. You understood what menu was being offered, so that's the, the special menu for that day is what's offered. And of course, then you can get your beverages as you normally would do, that we have the ordering windows are the 21st and 22nd, so we're taking, basically taking a pre-order for you so that we can organize and deliver promptly on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And that essentially repeats itself for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. The only difference there is that New Year's Eve, we're offering the regular in-home dining menu, and then the residents can enjoy the specials that are offered in Clubhouse. The last time I also addressed the open forum, I got a lot of emails and communications from residents about the plan for the park rail, and I think I might have, I didn't mean to upset anyone. I was really trying to articulate the fact that we are trying to take park rail to a new level. We are trying to make it a more fine dining experience. However, we're not taking away what is that casual feel, the bar that's there or the lunch that could be offered there. And I got a lot of feedback about those types of items like pizza and tacos and things like that. So all of those things will still be intertwined into the menu. I think the focus there really is to, is on the nighttime dinner service and to elevate our process there, whether it's our service process, whether it's our, any of our food that's prepared there would have an elevated feel to it. So that, we are searching for an executive chef specifically for that restaurant, just like Trio has its own chef, just like Park Rail, just like Clubhouse has its own chef. This would be a person that would be totally dedicated to the food service there. So I, so I guess I just wanted to clarify that, that casual feel for lunch will certainly not, not go away, and certainly the bar will be there for, for residents to enjoy. We're also focusing on separating the menus because we feel that the menu is too large, so there would be a separate lunch menu and a separate dinner menu. So just as a clarification there. And again, today I'm staying focused really just on the short-term future, which because the holidays sort of packed together, and there's a lot of excitement around this time of the year. So I wanted to just stay focused on that for now. I also wanted to let you know our capacity levels. That 75% for Clubhouse is just for special occasions, so right now we're at 50% at Clubhouse for normal operations. The 75% is for our special events, and that we are currently still not allowing guests. So hopefully, based on some of the information you heard today, that we'll eventually be able to start to get back to what would be 100% occupied and the type of service and operating hours that you've been used to prior to this. One more photo, and again, this is a big thank you from, from the team, just, just elated with the resident contribution for this year and just very, very happy to work, to be working here with, at Morings Park with all of you. So on behalf of them, I say thank you.
Good afternoon. Over the last several months, I've gotten several communications regarding some confusion about who residents should be contacting anytime you are in need of any technical support. So my hope today is to clarify the appropriate contacts that you should be reaching out to when you experience any technical difficulties in your home. On October 21st, I had published a memo which kind of detailed the support relationships we have with various vendors, both on-campus and off-campus. For your information, if you'd like to go back and review this memo, it can be found on the neighborhood website under the mailbox, under information technology. It is there so that you can review all the information I am going over today. With the migration to Hotwire that we are currently going through, any technical issues for your internet, telephone, or television service, our recommendation is you contact Hotwire directly. The reason for this is they are able to do some troubleshooting steps right on the phone with you, which in many cases is able to solve the problem without needing any escalation. Their phone number for that support is 239-217-3262. And again, that would be the fastest way in order to ensure that your TV, telephone, or internet service is restored in the event of an issue. For technical issues outside of that, such as RESI, the neighborhood website, connecting to any new devices you may have gotten to your Wi-Fi, or if you're unsure of who you should be contacting, you can continue to contact the Morings Park IT Department at the same number you've been dialing all along, 239-430-6337. Let me say that one more time. 239-430-6337. Now, within the memo I referenced, I gave several examples of technical requests that we've seen in the past, and to give you a number, the exact number to call right there. Final thing I wanted to speak about was support for your personal devices, your iPad, your computers, your printers. For residents in need of technical support for their personal devices, Morings Park has vetted several local vendors who are able to help you support those devices. These vendors are able, are there to assist you with things such as hardware failures, virus removals, hardware or software upgrades are an example of maybe your soundbar not connecting to your television. If you are, in the event you are unsure of who you should contact, you can still always reach out to the, to the help desk, and they will help direct you in the right direction to go. As always, if you have any questions regarding technology at Morings Park or any of the information that I presented today, do not hesitate to reach out to me at my office, and we can set up a time to, to discuss your concerns or just do it on the phone if that's your preference. Thank you very much, and at this time, I'll turn it back over to Ross.
First of all, thank you to the executive team. You did a fabulous job, and I know that your information is going to be well received. It's a great update, a great snapshot of where the organization is, both beyond the boundaries of the original campus and obviously a lot of details internal as well. So thank you for that. I, I have a few final comments I wanted to make because this is the last presentation we'll make before the end of the calendar year. This wraps up 2020. I know many of you probably share my sentiment that we're ready to give 2020 a good boot and say goodbye, but I do think that there are some things that are worthy of discussing before we give 2020 that boot. I want to talk just for a moment about the word perseverance. Many of our residents, not all, but many of our residents, this may have been one of the most difficult experiences and continues to be, and that is to, to weather through the pandemic. I would say most likely, most if not all of our partners, that also applies. When I say most, I know that there are people, both residents and partners, that have gone through some unique challenges in their life that probably surpass what we have experienced here with the pandemic. But nonetheless, it has been a significant challenge. It's been difficult. It's been difficult in a number of ways, and I wanted to just go down a brief checklist and share with you. And some of you may not want to be reminded of this, and some of you might say, wow, I did not realize all of those details. First and foremost, we weathered through a very difficult, and we continue to weather through a very difficult pandemic. You know, a 100-year event, 1918 was the last time that this country has seen anything like this. Granted, we have a lot more technology today. Vaccine was developed in literally about nine or 10 months, but that vaccine has not rolled out yet. It's in the process of rolling out, and we certainly have high hopes for it. You have persevered through this so far. We want you to lean on us to get through the balance of this, but there are better days coming. The loss of human connection, there is almost no words that can describe the difficulty our residents and your family members have experienced in the loss of human connectivity. I think that the worst of it was certainly and continues to be in part over in our skilled nursing, long-term care, followed by our assisted living, both in Orchid Terrace and Oakstone. There was a long run there where our residents could not make human contact with their loved ones, and that was very painful to witness. We now have visitation, albeit it's limited on how we do that. We're very cautious. We're particularly cautious now because we still do have a substantial positivity rate, but that was something that was experienced by, uniquely experienced by our health center and assisted living that was very, very difficult. And they have continued to weather through that. Dining restrictions and limited access to dining, even, you know, even that access to dining was critically important once we opened dining to 25%, then 50%, and ultimately 75, where we're settling out now. I think for most residents, that was your first taste of going back and having some semblance of normalcy in your life. It's been difficult because we could not serve the needs of everyone. We certainly had limitations in each of these dining venues, and, and for those who could not get a reservation, obviously, they settled with home dining. Home dining was certainly a program we were proud of when we initially launched it. I'm certainly proud of our partners who put that together. But anytime you do the same thing over and over and over again, even with some menu changes, it becomes monotonous. And I think that's where dining really offered a glimmer of hope, but you had to weather through a very difficult period and still to a certain extent of not having access when you wanted access or when you want it. It's easy to, to forget, rather. We went through an unprecedented hurricane season this year. I think we had more named storms in the last 60 or 70 years, possibly even more than that. Some of these storms were devastating. Fortunately, we didn't got, we did not get hit with anything that was significant in Southwest Florida. Certainly Louisiana got hit extremely hard. Some South American countries were pounded and were devastated, but the activity alone created an unbelievable stress factor on all of our residents, and you weathered through that. That is amazing. We had some staffing challenges. This has been very difficult this whole period. You can imagine also, not only with our residents and their family members, but also our partners. We had partners who had children who became ill from COVID. Some of them had to quit their job to be at home and take care of their children. In some cases, because the schools were closed, somebody had to be at home to, to watch the kids. So there was, in some cases, people who had to end their employment with us, whether it was permanent or temporary, just to be able to it was permanent or temporary, just to be able to take care of the needs of their children. Tough decisions made in a very difficult environment, but we continue to weather through it. Loss of marketing opportunities. You know, every day that went by was gut-wrenching because we couldn't open up the community going way back to late February, early March. We couldn't open up the community to a lot of interested people. Admittedly, when the virus first started to present itself in the United States, I don't think any of us really thought this was going to be a one-year or two-year event. Somehow, other than scientists and perhaps a lot of physicians who knew otherwise, I think we had this hope in the forefront of our mind that we would get through this in a few months, and that just wasn't in the cards. And so when people did finally feel like they could take a drive in their car and go visit a retirement community, and we knew that Morings Park was going to be at the top of their list, we could not entertain that. And that was very difficult because we knew the importance of, one, maintaining high occupancy at Morings Park, but we also understood the importance of meeting the needs of aging adults and providing them the housing needs, the support that they had. We weathered through that. We came together. We found opportunities at the earliest moment to open up the community, do it safely, escort people, make sure they had protective equipment on. All of these issues were well thought out and planned. We had a number of capital projects. Long before COVID was in the vocabulary for any of us, we had made some financial obligations or commitments. In some cases, we may not have committed the funds, but we certainly had planned to move forward, to continue to grow the organization and also better the organization. And so we had these capital projects hanging out there. Eventually, we found a way to safely execute on those projects and keep them moving forward, keep the momentum. We also knew that this was critical to the economic stability of a lot of our local vendors, general contractors, and so forth. We may not have had a direct responsibility to them, but we were all in this together, and it was important, if we could help out local companies in the Naples or southwest Florida area, we were determined to do it, and we did do it. We opened a new community called Morings Park Grand Lake during the pandemic. Hard to believe, not quite sure how we pulled that off. We planned for this, and we really had to do our research and study to make sure that every stick of furniture we brought into apartment homes, those workers had gloves on, they had masks on, they had sanitary wipes that were used. We were just extremely cautious, but at the same time, people had sold their homes down in the Naples area, or Benita Springs or Astero, and they needed to move in. We were able to facilitate that, weather through that storm, and execute. We took on a project that we knew was going to be large, substantial. We also knew it was going to be important to our residents. We had outgrown DirecTV. We had outgrown the product that we were using. It wasn't fast enough to meet our needs. It did not have the cutting-edge programmatic opportunities for us that Hotwire does. And so we took on Hotwire as our new provider of TV, internet, and telephone service, a major undertaking. And I'm happy to report that by the end of this calendar year, today is the 16th of December, as we do this presentation to you, by the 31st of December, we will have completed our Hotwire project for all resident-supported entities. So what that essentially means is, is every resident who lives within the Morings Park Institute will have received the necessary support to hook up their TV, internet, and telephone service. There might be some porting over of telephone lines that still lingers into January. Unfortunately, Hotwire and Morings Park don't have any control. We don't have control over CenturyLink, so that's a bit of a challenge there. Nonetheless, it will, it will process, it will go through. We'll just have to be a little bit more patient with some of the phone numbers that lag. There are some people who are out of town. We'll get those people hooked up as soon as they return. Otherwise, a huge undertaking and a huge success, weathered through that storm. So, you know, when we look back and we see these accomplishments in 2020, you often hear people say, well, you know, I wasn't able to get a lot done this year. It was a long nine or 10 months, seemed to be 12 months probably, before I go back to even some semblance of normalcy in my life. Well, I'm here to tell you that Morings Park accomplished a lot, a lot in 2020, an amazing amount of projects, projects that are physical in nature, and then also, a lot of projects has supported our residents and also our partners. What was, what was the secret sauce, to use Dan's terms, or his terminology, what was the secret sauce for us to accomplish this? I think hard-working, loyal, dedicated people who care about you as our residents and also about our community. I think first and foremost, though, if you really want to check it off as bullets, I think we made good decisions. This pandemic is not behind us, so I'm cautious when I say "we made," as in past tense. I think we continue to make good decisions. Those decisions were mostly decided upon ultimately by our chief executive officer, Dan. But I also want to commend my colleagues, the vice presidents, and the CIO, and the executive director of facility management. They did an excellent job of preparing the CEO to make those final decisions. My colleagues provided all the necessary data to really create good deduce reasoning and come up with the best decision that could be made, and they did a fabulous job, and my hat's off to them. I think we owe a lot to our resident council. The members are too many to name, but I'll just simply say, the resident council, and it's important for the residents of our organization to recognize this, the resident council did a fabulous job, a textbook job of being an advocate for the residents. They collaborated extremely well with our senior leadership. They brought ideas to the table. They helped us prioritize. They raised issues that were critically important to the safety and well-being of our residents. And I don't think, in my years in this business, I've ever seen a better, more well-oiled machine at communicating, and I would expect that that's going to continue well into 2021. That's the resident council, but equally, the residents themselves. The residents have done an amazing job of remaining steadfast through this entire period. It's, as I mentioned from the very beginning, this has been a very difficult period, and residents have found a way to find sunshine throughout each and every day, and I'm impressed by that. I equally take my hat off to our residents throughout the entire organization and on this campus, on the original campus, for all they've endured and still kept an optimistic view. Our dedicated partners, what can I say? Thank you, as each of our senior leaders came up today and expressed appreciation for the wonderful gift that you have provided to our partners. And I'll just simply say, they are incredibly appreciative, and they are incredibly dedicated. These are hard-working young men and women. These are hard-working men and women who have spent many years here on the campus. We're a very diverse organization. We have young, middle-aged, and older workers. We have people from all parts of the globe who work here, and they do a fabulous job. I can't salute our partners enough for what they have endured through this entire time, going home, handling the challenges of family, and keeping that group together at home, including children out of school, and at the same time, taking care of their second family, which is you all. We also can't forget about our loyal vendors. There are vendors who went above and beyond. I don't care if it's the US Mail Service, or if it's food delivery, if it's general contractors. These are people who worked with us on every one of our precautionary measures. They followed the rules. Perhaps they slipped every once in a while because communication is hard to make sure every single person gets the message, but they were always flexible, willing to work with us, and also very appreciative of the value for implementing precautionary measures. So I can't say enough about the vendors. I have a newfound appreciation for each and every one of them. And then the last one is just a strong belief shared by all of us that this is a very special place. Morings Park is not like other retirement communities. This I know. So I think that that also was part of that secret sauce. You can't talk about 2020 and say goodbye to it without talking about optimism for '21. Some things that will happen in '21. We will inoculate all of our residents and all of our partners with the vaccine. Some might end up getting the Pfizer vaccine, some might receive the vaccine from Moderna, some might get it from Johnson and Johnson. You know, you're going to get it if you want it, and hopefully, you want it. We think it's absolutely critical. It's a part of us doing our job toward herd immunity. We will never get our society back to a stabilized environment until we completely or nearly completely eradicate this particular virus. We will lift restrictions. Our current process of 75% dining, no more than 50 people in a common space, six feet apart, that will not be the normal life for everyone. I know it's hard to believe right now. It's almost a standard way of life for us, but things will get better. When will we lift these restrictions? I can't tell you until we start to, we start to receive the vaccines, we start to watch the positivity rate decline, we start to see the hospitalizations go down. I think that this is going to happen relatively fast. It all depends on how quickly those vaccines, those doses can get down into our world down here. We'll continue to operate in a safe and in a manner that's in the best interest of our residents and our staff. That's going to be part of 2021. We're not going to dust off our hands and say, we've been through that, been there, done that, now we're, it's behind us. I think that if nothing else, we'll, many of our partners, certainly our partners, will be telling their grandchildren about this event, and, you know, we should all learn something and take something away from this. And hopefully, what that is, is teamwork, camaraderie, keeping optimism in the forefront of our mind, and also doing what's necessary, even if it is a sacrifice. We will, we will gain normalcy, and again, that's going to be tied to the vaccine, and it'll take some time, but we will get there. We'll fill out, we'll fill our communities to capacity, and we'll reestablish a strong waiting list again. You know, Morings Park has always enjoyed strong occupancy. We've always been the gold standard, and we're the place that people want to go to. That is not past tense. We will reestablish that. We're already well on our way. You heard Tom Mann. He's got some great numbers there, some amazing numbers for Grand Lake, and also the combined communities between Gray Oaks and the original campus. People are choosing Morings Park, and there's a reason why they're choosing Morings Park, and we should all be happy that that's occurring. And that will continue to occur in 2021, I have no doubt. We'll continue to deliver exceptional services in those areas that our residents feel that we might be falling a bit short. We're going to correct that. Excellence is our goal. Perfection is probably not achievable in life. I always say to the staff, if you find perfection, let me know. I'd like to know where it's at. But excellence should always be our goal, and if we do fall short on something, we need to correct it, and that becomes, it needs to become commonplace for us moving forward. And lastly, we will be simply the best. We will be the best. I still think we are. Even through all of this, I think that's a great example of how Morings Park is truly the best. So those are my final remarks for 2020. Thank you for watching this particular video. I think Morings Park is a wonderful organization. Our residents and our staff make it so, and thank you for all you have done in 2020.